Good evening. We welcome you here to the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We call our meeting order. We note that we have a quorum. We have six council members here. Councilman Tomlin is excused tonight. We will begin with an opening ceremony. Return to Councilmember Karen Lang.
Would you please stand and repeat the question, Mayor Johnson?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I note that we do have some scouts here tonight, and I think they're ready to come up. And they've been prepped on the things they need to share with us. If you'll come up here to the microphone. Well, at least they have to come up with you if they won't.
I'm Kayden Woods. So I'm in Troop 796. Citizenship in the community. And I go to Pioneer Elementary.
Okay, who are you? Say, Harrison Harrod.
I'm Harrison Harrod.
Aye. Eleven-year-old scout.
Twelve-year-old. I'm a twelve-year-old scout.
I'm Troop 796.
Troop 796.
Working on my citizenship for the community.
I'm of my shi- shi- I can't pronounce it right.
Can I just say, I go to Churchill Junior High?
I go to Churchill Junior High.
Great. Well, thank you for coming tonight. I don't believe there were any others. With that then, we'll go to our minutes of January 15th. A motion on the minutes, please.
Motion to approve the minutes of January 15th?
Second.
Properly before us. Seeing no further comments on the minutes. All in favor of approving our January 15 minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those all say no. Passes unanimously. The minutes are approved. We do have a comment period. This is a public comment period. We will have a separate, as required by state law, public comment time for application Z142018 to project on 5600 West. If you're here to speak to that, if you'll wait, we'll get to that in just a few minutes. Our public comment period is for anyone on any topic. Maximum of five minutes per person. And it is not a debate period. It's time for you to respond. Since we have some new people here, I would mention that by state law, we cannot discuss policy unless it's on our agenda. So if we don't respond, we're legally prevented. You can say anything you want. You could discuss policy, events, whatever. The best we can do is maybe mention that we'll meet with you after or that we'll put it on our agenda for a future meeting or something like that. So, five-minute max.
What's that total?
Oh, thirty minutes total. I don't think everyone's here, although it's unusual. We do have a larger group here tonight. So we'll see how that goes. But we normally don't hit our thirty minutes. People don't usually talk that long. But you can, and we do have our timer here. With that then, we have a couple of people who signed up. Jim Beeson.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council. Back again. Last week I was sick, that's why I wasn't here. I'm asking for the pet ordinance to be put on the study meeting docket. I've been told it's working around with the city attorney and city manager. Hopefully, we can get it on the docket here in the next couple of weeks. But I'm asking for you guys to keep plugging that way. The other thing is, I want to bring up is the new parking enforcement. I'm all for it, but in the chief's meeting, they talked about letting people know about it. Is their main, what they're doing right now. I was just talking with the chief. I got a suggestion of their Dirty Dozen, if you've seen it on their Facebook and on their website. It's possibly putting that in the water bill so the owners would see a separate paper that says, Dirty Dozen, this is what parking enforcement's going to do. Because I know there's an issue with people parking straight in on their cul-de-sacs. And people are starting to get tickets now, and they're like, wait a minute, I've never heard of this. More education, and since everybody gets a water bill, and a water bill, trash bill, it might be a good idea, you know, to do something like that. So that's all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you. Next is Ben Whitten.
Hi there, Mayor. Esteemed Council. Appreciate your time. And also, one thing is, I do want to voice my support for the review of the pet ordinance. I really appreciate your efforts in that regard. The other issue I want to bring up is, since Jim brought it up, I'm actually one of the people that actually got cited for this new parking thing when it comes to cul- like anywhere. So my house is on a cul-de-sac. I was never, I was never educated that, like, we couldn't park headfirst, that it has to be parallel to, like, where the curb is. I never knew that. But yeah, I got cited for it. And just speaking with law enforcement and also, we need to have something, I, I'm not sure what the exact resolution should be, but we need to have something done about this because in, like, snow days, the way my house is oriented, I don't know if it's easy for you guys to see, but this is where the road is. And so if I can't park headfirst, like, we have multiple cars at my house, like a lot of households do. And so if we can't park in headfirst, we can't all park parallel to the curb. And so if we can't all park parallel to the curb, what I could do is I could park to the side of my house right here, which I've seen some of my neighbors do. But the only thing is, I'm worried about, like, on snow days, where, like, if my neighbor has one car parked right here, and I'm parked, I have one car parked right here, it's going to impede the plows from going through and parking through here. And so, and so if I can't park here on snow days, I don't want to be impeding the snow plows. But I also can't park headfirst in, in front of my own property, then I really don't know where I can park and be compliant. So, you know, I mean, I made a joke with Jim over there, like, what am I going to have to do? Like, you know, go to, like, a convenience store parking lot and park there until, like, the roads are plowed and then move my car back? Is that what I have to do to be compliant with, like, what they're rolling out right now? I mean, I've already gotten two citations for this, and, you know, I had no idea that was even a thing. But I'm just, you know, concerned, like, I know if I were to park here right now, because it's dry, I'd be okay. Like, but as soon as it snows, and I'm parked on this side, and my neighbors park on this side, I'm going to be impeding traffic. And so if I can't park in, like I said, if I, to reiterate, if I can't park in front of my property, and I can't park on the side of my property, which would stop the snow plows from coming through, then I really don't have anywhere to park. I even thought about doing something really crazy, which is, like, even driving onto the grass, like, parking on the lawn itself. But like, even then, that, like, from what I've been told, that wouldn't be right because that would, that would also be a violation, having your car parked on your front lawn. So I just would like some education on how I can park properly and still be compliant, because the last thing I want to do is obtain any more of these. So if I can get some education on that, I'd really appreciate it. And also, you know, some way, like, maybe you can change, like, provide more education or change how it's enforced, so like, you know, like, if, you know, we're not, my cul-de-sac is big. So even the way I'm parked, like, with this vehicle that was cited, it's not impeding any emergency vehicles from going in here, making a turn, coming out. So, you know, the whole, I was cited for ordinance 22-2-113, which is restriction on stopping, standing, or parking. And the way my vehicles are parked, I'm not restricting stopping or preventing anybody from coming in or out. So I just want to be compliant, but I also feel like we need to have a more look at this. So either, like, so I can either be educated on how I can park properly so that I can be compliant, or, you know, if we can maybe have this rule looked at, you know, to make some exceptions, maybe for weather or something like that, so that we can park, you know, here and stuff, and be compliant with the law and et cetera. But like, yeah, I never knew this was a thing. I even took the liberty of going through, you know, West Valley, you know, my neighboring neighborhoods. And I, I took photographs. I mean, we got a lot of people parking the same way. So this is going to impact a lot of people. A lot of, I'm sure, I guarantee us, once these citations are coming in, you're going to receive a lot of complaints. So if we can get some clarification on this matter, it'd be really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in our public comment period? Seeing none. Okay. I'll close the public comment period. Bring him back here. Mr. Powell, any comments?
No, thank you, sir.
Okay. And we go to item seven on our agenda, which is the public hearing on application Z142018 filed by Dev Group requesting a zone change from agricultural and C to general commercial to multiple-unit dwelling residential and general commercial. This is a property at 3567 and 3627 South 5600 West, or between those. And included in this will be ordinance 1902, which is the actual zoning change, and then resolution 19-07 for the development agreement. So we'll introduce that, and then we'll address both the ordinance and the resolution. It's about 14.3 acres of land. Currently, it's open land, or on the part of it are some homes, some older homes. This will be replaced with townhomes, two- and three-story spread around there. And then there is one part on, let's see, it's on 5600 West, the one commercial pad that will remain in there that will be a part of that. And so that's the change that's proposed before us. With that introduction, have I covered everything there? Anything else I ought to add? That's the proposal we will be voting on tonight. For those who are maybe visiting here, if we don't spend a lot of time discussing it, understand this is the second time we've discussed it in a council meeting. We have a study meeting the week prior where we ask questions and become familiar with it. So that's the issue before us. With that, I will open it to public comment. Is there anyone here who wants to speak to this issue? And this public comment period is limited to this issue. Yes, come forward. If you'll state your name and address, and we'll go from there.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name's Calvin Forrest. I reside at 4015 South Starwood Street here in West Valley. I'm also a member of the carpenters union and a representative of such. And I'm here to speak on behalf, well, I don't know, as if I want to speak on behalf of that. I understand that that is some undeveloped land, and there is a great need for additional tax revenue in the city. And there's a real need for additional housing throughout the valley, throughout the county. And whereas this is going to appease both of those issues, I am with several of my fellow carpenters here, that they live here and they work here. And some of the business practices that I have been up in front of this council to speak on before prevent a lot of these hard-working men from getting good-paying jobs in the cities that they work in. Because that business practice, as I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but they hire guys and they pay in cash. And it makes that developer, makes it easier for him to get his project done. It makes it easier for these unscrupulous contractors to get the job. They don't pay taxes, they don't pay workman's comp, which are things that our contractors provide to protect those guys and protect their families. So as much as I understand the council's need and developers' need to develop, get some tax revenue, and make some money, those guys are going to make money off of this development. They're going to sell those houses, they're going to develop that strip mall or something like that. People are going to lease that property, there's going to be taxes coming in, there's going to be money going around. But it prevents, those, those sort of business practices prevent contractors that my, that my fellow carpenter brothers work for from getting that job because their cost is up here, because they pay a fair, sustainable wage, they pay workman's comp, they have insurance for their families, and they have a retirement. And a lot of these contractors do not provide that. And that isn't seen on the final bid. It's just, oh, wow, this is a great price, let's go with this guy. And I understand that the council is not, is not privy to a lot of that information. It's just a development, and let's, let's go ahead and develop this land. So like I say, I understand the need for projects like this, but a lot of these projects do not go to the contractors that actually, that actually employ several of the people that make up cities like West Valley. So moving forward on projects like this, we, we are here in force tonight. There will be more of us, I hope, in the future. And we're, like I say, not to be pointing fingers, but we're kind of sick and tired of the way that things are going. And so we're, we're getting out there, we're trying to talk to communities and developers and school boards, city councils, everybody that will, that will listen to our pleas to, to understand that this, these sorts of things need to stop. I would implore that you work with Senator Maine, Senator Thatcher, and-
Actually, I'm going to interrupt you because I need to check with the council. This particular time is for discussing the issue of changing the zoning on this project and then a development agreement. And so council advised me, it seems like we're off-topic here, that you probably should have been speaking in our general public comment period.
Understood.
Counsel, what do you think?
Well, I agree, Mayor, but it seems like you've tried to bring it around that this is going to be something that's developed, and they ought to use, they ought to follow the law in developing it.
Exactly.
Which we're not hiring any contractors for. We would just decide whether or not they can, we would change the zoning so they could put this housing in there instead of the, instead of what exists now. So, I mean, I think that you've been heard as far as following the law on this project and all projects, but I, I think we're a little bit off of focus or off topic as far as-
Sure, I, I understand that.
And what the issue is with respect to this zone change application.
And that's probably just my unfamiliarity with kind of how the particulars of this work, and so I apologize for that. But like I say, I wasn't sure if I should bring it up specifically under this. I would say that I'm okay with the zone change, but it's, it's one of those, it's kind of like, careful what you wish for. Because I know that it's, yeah, it's going to bring in revenue, and that's all good for the city. But sometimes it just, it feeds the beast that we're fighting. So, but thank you for your time.
Well, when you come, if ever there's a question, you're certainly welcome to check with staff beforehand, or we try and assist during the meeting as well.
Sure. I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Powell?
I just had a question for the gentleman, if none of the other councilmen did before he sat down there.
Okay.
First, I just want to make sure I'm clear, because you have gotten up and spoken about this subject two or three times before, but I've never heard you actually allege that any particular contractor or developer that was connected with the project was participating in the practices you're talking about. So for this particular project, are you alleging that? That any of these developers or construction companies or anybody connected to this project is actually doing this?
No, but I would, I would be surprised if it doesn't happen.
I just wanted to be clear. I just wanted to understand.
I'm not, I'm not saying that guy does it unless I know he does, and I've seen it.
And then I did also want to make one other point clear, which is probably more for the general audience, and it's a good public policy sort of the education note, Mayor. Might help you as well in the future. When commercial business comes into the city, yes, that is a net gain from a tax revenue from a capital investment standpoint to the tax coffers of the city. When a residential unit comes into the city, almost every time on a net basis, it's an actual cost to the city. When you add in the property taxes that come into the city versus the services that are paid out, there's no financial incentive for a city to bring in housing as a, as a class of development. That is simply to accommodate and try to make the neighborhood and the city and provide for those housing opportunities that, as you stated, are needed. I just wanted to make sure that was clear as well, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Like I say, I do appreciate that. It's, I'm still learning.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
We don't want to discourage participation, but we are bound by certain rules, and we do have to focus on what's before us. So, thank you. Okay, thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this issue? Yes?
Yeah, my name's Troy Herrick. One of the things that concerns me about whenever we start changing, saying from agricultural to residence and that, are we also looking at traffic and infrastructure? Because that really concerns me. You know, everybody out here drives, and we see that the roads are getting more and more crowded. So, you know, that's something that also needs to be considered. You know, instead of saying, okay, we're going to build houses, build apartments, we're going to build high-rises, whatever we're going to do, how are we going to move these people around? And that's the only comment I have.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no further comment on this particular application, we'll close the public comment portion, bring it back to the council for additional comments and/or motions.
I would just like to say, there were some concerns brought up in the planning commission meeting of the three-story complex being next to some residential to the south, it being too tall. And I really appreciate that the developer heard that and took that to heart and changed from the three-level, three stories to a two-story. So I really do appreciate that move.
Right, all of the three-story units will be on the interior, and the two-story units will be on the exterior if we approve this according to the revised site plan. And, you know, if you go out there and look at what's there now, this is certainly an area that needs to be redeveloped. And certainly, we need more housing because we just have more and more people. I don't know where they're all coming from. But I would move for approval of ordinance 1902, which is the zone change, adopting the revised site plan.
Second.
I would also like to add, this is not in opposition to the motion on the second, but just for our neighbors in the audience, that yes, definitely all of those different considerations, remember, traffic and increased transit, and those things are all definitely strongly taken into consideration. And particularly in this one, there was quite a bit of discussion about an additional public road that's going in here to alleviate traffic around that intersection at 35th and Institute. So that definitely is taken into consideration.
Seeing no further comments on these items, then we have to take a roll call vote. We will turn to our city recorder for that vote.
Councilman Fiti Sumanu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northwell?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I would move to approve resolution 1907, the development agreement. And mention that that agreement will be amended by staff to take in the revised site plan that we just adopted.
Second.
So the motion is we approve resolution 1907 with the modification of the proposed development plan with the change from the three-story to the two-story.
Right, right.
Okay, it's properly before us. Any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Northwell?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Fiti Sumanu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, the made on our agenda, resolution 19-08. This is to authorize an inter-local cooperative agreement between our city and Salt Lake County for certain funding of the Utah and Salt Lake Canal Trail. The Utah and Salt Lake Canal runs through our city. We have been gradually working on different parts of those canals in our city to put in a trail along it. It's the only place we can do it since most of our city's built out. And so we are going to contribute $100,000 of the anticipated $750,000 of the cost, with the balance coming from Salt Lake County. Salt Lake County is also interested in developing that, ultimately hoping to connect up between the Crosstown Trail up to the east side and then out to Mountain View Corridor. This one takes it out to 7200 West, I think it is?
Yes.
Yeah. And from where we are now. And so we've been developing that, and this is another step in that. That is the issue before us, that agreement for the funding. This is the way Salt Lake County handles it as they do things with cities, is an inter-local cooperative agreement. With that introduction-
Let me make a comment. These, the city's contribution to this trail is from park impact fees, which are received by the city when new housing developments are created. And it's very restrictive what we can spend these funds for. We couldn't put it into the police department, or the fire department, or anything like that. So we're always looking for good uses of these funds and participating on this trail from 59th West to 7200 West, where we're really, the county is putting way more money into this than we are. I think that that's a good use of these funds.
I would add also that the county is absorbing all costs for maintaining the trail once it's built. And so with those things all in mind, I would move to approve resolution 19-08.
Second.
Properly before us. Any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Fiti Sumanu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northwell?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, item nine on our agenda, resolution 19-09. Although if you look at this, it may seem a little confusing that we're doing a warranty deed from ourselves to ourselves. This is actually to accomplish some dedicated right-of-way and the consolidation of certain properties owned by the city. In order to do this, we have to have it all one piece, and there are just little pieces. It's actually over by our Public Works Department, the building over there. So, and we're doing some work there. So we're required to do the same thing we ask others to do, and that's to consolidate those pieces into one. This is what the resolution does. With that, the council.
I move for approval of resolution 19-09.
Second.
Properly done. Seeing no further comment, to our city recorder.
Councilman Northwell?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Fiti Sumanu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now that completes our regular agenda. We don't have a closed session. I would like to make a comment. We encourage people to come. We encourage you to become familiar with the processes. And we, we must abide by certain rules just to maintain order, and then also to meet many state laws. For example, if we, we cannot start our meeting ever early. We finished our previous meeting an hour ago, we just had to sit and wait. because we have to publicly announce the starting time. We can never hold a meeting when we don't have the public informed other than, in fact, all of them have to be announced and the timing. Some are closed if we're talking about legal issues or security, things like that. But we encourage you to become familiar with the processes, not just for the city, but to your government and come and participate. We don't want to discourage that, but we do have to follow certain guidelines, so. Just remember, our public comment period is always open to anything. And with that then, anything else, our council? Seeing none, we'll entertain one last motion.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, it passes unanimously, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.